Alright, here he goes. Yeah, we're waiting for you. This is your mic, be very careful. Junior's getting his headphones on. He smells like...
Junior?
Smells like a back alley, but in a good way.
What's up, motherfuckers? Welcome to the motherfucking Ventura Tide Pod, Season 3, motherfuckers! We don't want no haters here, we want participators.
And we participate.
Yes, you wanna introduce our guest, Junior? We got Casey.
That was some good stuff.
Casey, yeah.
I can't even hate now.
Junior, say hi.
Kinda jealous.
We got city councilwoman from District 1, Liz Campos. Welcome to the show.
Hi, uh, we're down here in District 1, at 293 East Main Street.
We're in your fucking district right now.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah, isn't it?
Whoever shows up gets a shirt.
Yeah, what kinda shirt?
A Ventura Tide Pod shirt.
One of those?
So come on down to 294 East... No, not one of these, because the ones that I'm wearing, it's like a prototype. So it hasn't been mass-produced yet, but Junior's gonna give one of the, uh...
Ventura Tide Pod.
It's the one I got.
Casey has a special edition, you wanna stand up and show the people?
Special edition?
Check it out.
Ha, that's right. Special edition Ventura Tide Pod shirt.
She's got the gold-plated, 24 karat gold-plated Ventura Tide Pod shirt. That's only for the true, the true fans.
Yeah, true fans, it's not hating, man, if you like that.
Okay.
Stay true since the whole journey.
So, uh, welcome back, everyone, thanks for being on our first Season 3 episode, welcome back, Junior.
Welcome back, Mr. Randall Scandal.
It's been awhile.
Good to see ya.
Uh, we're here in the Mystery Shop, which is gonna be like the final night of the Mystery Shop. We got some folks over here playing Magic, that's a card game.
Nice.
You ever play that?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Me neither, but it's like, it's, it's pretty fun.
It's magic.
Yeah, it is.
It's magic, ladies and gentlemen.
Like Battle Wizards and stuff like that. Anyway, and, um, the Mystery Shop is not going away, though, it is, uh, moving to...
Oxnard.
Downtown Oxnard, so... Check 'em out over there.
By the movie theater.
If you wanna buy some Pokemons.
And you got cards going on right now as we speak. A live card show going on, so...
Soon you'll find them across the street from Plaza Park.
Plaza Park?
In Oxnard.
You know more than me, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, you gonna be on the show, or you just gonna be walking around like a boss? This is like Mina Azul. 8:30, 8:30. Alright, hop on, guys. Junior has you set up, don't worry, don't worry. Alright. Mina, the great Mina Azul. That's your mic right there. And, uh, Fusion, you gonna be on, or you gonna wait?
Grab my water.
Oh, no, please.
No, please, she's the boss.
Mina Azul, the hottest supermodel in the 805. Everybody.
Look at those Tidpods.
So you guys are sharing a mic, is that how we're gonna, okay, is that okay? Yeah.
This is already his room.
It looks, it looks crowded.
The screen looks good. Surprisingly.
It's because I, I duct taped the camera to that pole right there.
Nice, whatever it takes.
It's duct tape, the solution for everything.
Welcome back to, uh, Season 3, I just wanna start off with the question, um, are you pregnant?
No, no.
Okay.
Neither am I.
We went out to, we went out to lunch with Mina for a Tide Pod business meeting, and she didn't feel good and walked right out, like after one minute.
And then she was doing the emotions.
No.
And me and Junior were like, I think she might be.
No, which I know is weird, considering I always talk about food. It is weird, but no.
You left all that food there.
I know, and you know how much I thought about it?
Yeah.
But it's, I, I couldn't eat it anyway, so it's fine, it's alright, it's alright.
Next time.
Next time. And it wasn't, you know, damn, don't bring that up, because I actually am really bummed, I love Finnis, I'm really bummed.
Oh.
I thought you were bummed that you were pregnant, yeah.
Oh, god.
Okay, so Season 3, Season 3 starts. Um, I just wanna say thank you to the Mystery Shop for hosting us.
Woo!
They've always been very kind to us, they let us carry our t-shirts in here, they're, they're, uh, very nice to the West End baggers and, um, all the musicians, Little Pickle. Even in, how long have they been here? They've only been here for one year, but so many memories already in this little spot.
Best concerts, best parties, best games, and now they're off to Oxnard for new adventure.
Yeah, Liz, what do you think about them leaving your district? Like, is that, um, something that we could've done better in the city of Ventura?
Well, I haven't heard from them about the move, I know the rents are getting really, really high on Main Street for all the businesses. Um, I really hate that they're leaving this block of Main Street, cause they brought so much activity and fun out in the street and in the store, that it helped the other businesses. So, they're a loss, not just by them leaving, but a lot of the other businesses were increased by their presence, particularly Rory's Ice Cream.
Oh, yeah, Rory's, I don't know what's gonna move here next, but, uh, Rory's is gonna take a big hit.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I know, I spent nine dollars that day.
Did you?
Yeah. That's nine dollars, it's not gonna be, uh, spent next year. So, what's up, Rory's? And then this business, uh, with Capricios, they're probably happy.
Well, you know, I know they're, they do some long hours, and they weren't overjoyed over Little Pickle and Corey Morehall and people who came here to sing.
Apparently Little Pickle isn't good music to have a romantic dinner to.
Ah, hey, you know what, it's fine, he's fine.
It's not, no offense to Little Pickle, it's just romantic Italian food, it's like, you know, they don't wanna hear about...
But some people like that music, some people would enjoy his music over dinner, or barbecue, or something, so, you know, it just is a matter of taste.
Something new.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, we have, um, the, we're gonna do 10 questions for Liz Campos later, but I gotta do this before, cause I, I can feel myself forgetting already. We got a new sponsor, Postrits. Like, it's portraits, but it's called Postrits.
Postrits.
Postrits, okay? Oh, this is a gift for Junior. Oh. So, I gotta tell you what we're doing.
This is cute, we didn't set up ourselves, great, but here we go.
Okay, Junior?
Don't expect any more from us.
This is a gift, this is from Postrits, this is a gift to the podcast, I want you to open it. It directly involves you, don't put my address on the show.
We're watching Junior open the package.
Hold it up to the camera. Yeah, yeah, hold it like this, yeah. Alright, so this is a picture of, uh, Junior.
Junior.
Alright, and he's in a king outfit, and hold it up, and what are you, bro?
King of the North, King of the North!
The North, Junior.
King of the North!
North King!
Junior's the King of the North!
No, no, okay, open it again, and you have to say, "I'm the motherfucking king," remember we went over this? Open it again, I'm serious, they were very specific, we don't get paid if you don't do this.
That was a practice moment, so we're going to do it right.
We're trying.
Alright. Good practice, good practice, okay. Here we go.
Okay, 1, 2, 3.
Alright, oh, what'd you get, Junior? This is from Postrits, a gift for the podcast, hold it up.
King of the North!
Beautiful!
Woo, King of the North!
I'm the motherfucking King of the North!
King of the North, King of the North, Junior's the King of the North! 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 Yay, Postrits, thank you!
Thank you, Postrits.
Yeah, bro.
That is beautiful.
Are you gonna hang it?
Yeah, where you gonna hang it?
You should put it in the bathroom.
That's awesome.
I think you should give it to your baby mama. I think she'd fucking love it.
I love it.
You like this?
I love it, bro.
Can we hang it up in the studio?
Forever, bro.
Alright, I'll put it up here for the show.
On the next show, we'll see Casey dressed as the Queen of the North. Okay, maybe. Maybe not.
You'd have to marry the King of the North.
Uh, married or denied.
Is this a proposal?
King of the North.
Ventura Tide Pod proposal?
I'm an officiant who wants to get married. Oh, and also, if you're a Big Lebowski fan, I am now, I am now also, um, ordained through the, um, Dudas religion.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so, yeah, so if anyone wants to be married Big Lebowski style, I'm totally for that, too.
Oh, alright!
Alright.
Or funerals or baptisms.
Where's the money, Lebowski? Okay, so, this is the first time we've ever had a city council guest on the show, did you know that?
Well, no, I think the city council guests have been on your show before.
I know that they call in, this is like the first live.
Live on Tide Pod!
What about the Christmas one?
Yeah, sure, we...
Official, official.
Official, official episode, yeah.
Official?
She was just like...
Not a side quest.
Yeah.
I'm here, I'm really here, it's me.
Some would call this political suicide, um...
Having me on the show?
No, being on this, this show.
Hey, I, I survived so far, but we don't know what's coming next month.
Right.
Yeah, alright, so we got 10 questions for Liz Campos, uh, I only made seven, so you guys gotta fill in the other three. Okay, alright, so first question, um, how, when you, when a law gets made, how does it get up to, for the council to vote on it?
Well, the law isn't made until the council does vote on it, and with four positive votes. So, council members can bring a policy consideration, and that will bring the, the proposed law before the council. And, or others can bring it, the police chief brought the one about bikes on Main Street.
He just did that on his own?
He, he did that working with the city attorney, but, so it doesn't have to be a council member, but it needs to be someone with enough seniority in the city that they can make that request. And that was a law enforcement question, and so, and then the council has to vote, and there has to be a majority vote. And then it takes a couple months to become actual, to get written into the city code.
Okay, how does someone like Junior get a law? Cause he doesn't have seniority.
Uh, and he's not a, not a city employee, not a manager, not a city council member yet.
He's the King of the North, but, uh...
He's the King of the North, so what he would do is communicate with one or two city council members about the need for the law, and if he can convince them that the law is really necessary, then they could bring it as a policy consideration. It's happened before, it can happen again.
Um, so that brings me to my next question, what law would you wanna bring to the, the council?
Um, I would be like, "Hey, you can ride bikes on Main Street."
Oh, you would reverse that?
Yeah.
I wanna say that people already did that. Nobody, everyone's ignoring that law, I haven't never, I haven't never seen anyone like, I don't know, like, really pay attention to that law, or...
Someone literally just, someone literally just rode on the sidewalk right now.
Yeah, we just saw somebody ride by, yeah.
He must be watching on YouTube.
Me and Junior saw, um, like, an 85-year-old lady, I'm guessing her age, just ride by, and I was like, dude, if, if she's breaking the law, like, that law is a toast. That toast, rest in peace.
I, I will say that it was written without enforcement in it, so what can you do if you don't put in the law what the enforcement's gonna be, it's hard to enforce. That law, we know, we all know, cause we were here a year ago, the law came about because of a few, uh, juveniles, a few young people riding electric bikes kind of dangerously on Main Street. And over time, they started riding along the promenade, knocking over people, running over dogs, luckily, they never hit any children. I witnessed them ride their bikes into Vons at, on West Main Street one day, the manager was smarter than them, so...
How do they run over dogs? That's like hard to do.
It's, it's pretty sad, but, uh, two weeks ago, or 10 days ago, uh, two members of that group attacked an unsheltered woman at the landing.
Yeah, she was sleeping.
And injured her pretty badly, and they, um, assaulted a gentleman outside the museum two days ago, or yesterday, I'm not sure which day.
It's on Clean Up Ventura.
Well, I don't care about Clean Up Ventura, but the, the city report, so, their, their bikes are being confiscated and actions being taken, and today, there were officers talking to people on bikes downtown. Primarily, the electric bike has been the problem in the Main Street area. I, I still, I maintain that we should have a dedicated bike lane where pedestrians stay out of the way of bikes.
Yeah, yeah.
But it, you know, it's a lot of work, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Junior, because we do need to do more with it to make everybody safe, but also, everybody be able to enjoy the world we live in.
Yeah, and what was that?
Good job, Junior.
What was that councilman guy that said, "Why did we ban skateboards?" What was the, the need of skateboards?
McReynolds.
Yeah, um, I have no clue why that was added in.
Better question. Why aren't those, no, I'm not gonna say why, I'm gonna change this, if that was my child, running around a muck and being a jerk to people, oh no, oh no, no, no.
Yeah, he wouldn't need the police to go after him.
Oh, yeah, I'd be like, no.
You would already take care of it.
Because you're a mother.
I'm momless group here, like, it's all...
You're Junior's mom.
Yeah, but the, the thing is, she's right.
Yeah.
Responsible parents are there with their kids, watching what's going on, and educating them from much younger. It's really sad that one of these young men is only 13, and he's in juvenile hall.
Yeah, that's sad.
Because he wasn't...
From right from wrong.
Yeah, he wasn't taught properly.
He might not learn it in juvenile hall.
I, it's doubtful, you know, but what we need to do as responsible people is make sure that there's more opportunities for others to educate young people. Like, Casey's a teacher, and everybody at her school loves her, even though she won't let them get away with a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
And that's important, but it's also important for the parents to reinforce that.
Do, do you think kids like that, kinda like tough love, or, um, what do you call it, like guidelines?
You're asking me?
Yeah.
I feel the majority of the kids want to make our, us teachers happy and proud, and they kinda expect us to believe that they can do better when they start slacking off. They want us to know that we're aware of their daily behaviors, and try to encourage them, and I feel that they do kinda want that little tough love. I, I, yeah, kinda like, um, being accountable, like, really treating them as a one-on-one individual, instead of just my student, like, really bond with them and see who they are as individuals, and learn to see what each student needs, because they all need different things, they're not all the same.
Yep.
Some, some do benefit from the tough love, but you gotta know, you gotta be a teacher to really understand your individual students, to know what student needs to benefit and to learn and to grow, because they're all different.
Yep, they are all different, I got my son.
Yeah.
He was in juvenile hall, because he pulled out a knife on somebody. You, you, you know, you did that, you put up to the consequences, and he was in there for at least six months.
But now he knows how much you love him.
Yeah, and I keep telling them, "I'm not gonna defend you, if you're doing wrong, I'll hand you myself." I'm not, you know, like your mom, I gave you everything, you know, because the boys are mama's boys, and the girls are daddy's girls, but some, you gotta, you know, you try to teach them right, but the moms don't want them taught right. You, the moms don't want them to be yelled at, and be like, you know what?
Stop talking.
Ha, that's right.
No, 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 no.
No, that, Junior?
You're generalizing, there you go, some, some, you're generalizing.
Hey, Junior's, Junior's got six boys, that's, he's probably learned a little, some...
Some moms.
But you also choose your partners, sorry, sorry for the people who choose poorly.
Do we need to separate Mina and the King of the North?
Uh, I was gonna say, could we do a roleplay, like, pretend like Junior's your 13-year-old son that rode an e-bike and ran over a dog, uh, can you lecture him? How would you lecture him?
Oh, how would I lecture you? This is hard, cause my kid doesn't get into trouble like this, actually, but I have experience lecturing other children and adults.
Okay.
Yes, um, I'd be like, "Junior, what the fuck were you thinking?"
I didn't see him, he came out of nowhere.
No.
No, Junior?
Maintain proper lookout, no bike, no fucking bike, are you kidding me?
And the poor dog.
Yeah, did you even say sorry? Did you stop?
No, I kept going.
You kept going?
Yeah.
I don't even know what to say to you right now. Do you understand how terrible that is? Do you feel bad?
Yes, I do.
Like, how bad?
It was my dog.
And you didn't stop? You didn't stop at all, you didn't tell anyone, did people see you?
I don't know.
Probably.
Are you gonna bail him out?
No.
Of, uh, Junior, you're gonna let him stay the night?
I would, I, you know what, yeah, don't call, I, honestly, um, everybody knows not to call me, though, like, don't call me, because for one, I'm probably not gonna answer the phone anyways. Like, I'm not gonna answer the phone, and if I'm sleeping, I'm especially not gonna answer the phone, and I like to sleep.
Me, too.
I'm not the person to call for a lot of things. Text me and say, "I am in prison," you know, and I'll say, "Oh, sorry, that sucks."
Yeah, I'm sleeping, I'll call you in the morning.
From the Tide Pod, lost and found, 294, next person that shows up gets this Cosby sweater.
That's cute!
Whoa!
Let me see that Cosby sweater.
Right, it's cute.
Who wouldn't wanna wear that?
Right?
Well, who did wear it into the Tide Pod?
We've been searching, we have, we have no fucking idea, uh, it was in the studio.
A long fucking time.
Yeah, it's been there for over a year.
Yo.
And next person comes, gets it, obviously...
Talking about Pride, there was a Pride event this Sunday at 6:00 PM at Imesys Pizza, Imesys Pizza, right?
What does that have to do with the sweater?
Medici's Pizza.
What does that have to do with the sweater?
It's very colorful.
This is a Pride sweater?
I mean, it's very colorful, it's rainbow colors, I'm just saying, it's cute.
It's darkly proud.
Somebody's looking for an outfit.
Just in time for summer?
Yes, the hottest day of the year in Ventura, coming soon.
Okay, we, question number two for Liz Campos.
We're only on number two?
There's a lot of questions.
Oh, that was like one, and then like A, B, C, like, there are boy...
This is a long show coming ahead of us.
Alright, Mike Johnson, Mike Johnson, what the fuck?
That's the question?
Yeah.
I agree.
What's going on there? I have no idea what's happening with, uh, Mr. Mike Johnson.
Well, he decided not to run for reelection, that's not, I mean, I, he has to make his own choice.
Why not? We were fucking voting for him.
Yeah, he's not in your district, Junior.
You weren't voting for him.
You weren't voting for him.
But we want him, you know, cause he...
You wanna vote for, you would like to.
Yeah, we would like to...
You know what, just, just like, put his name down anyway, just write it down with a little heart.
Put it right in?
Yeah.
With a heart next to it.
I don't know if that would work, uh...
Yeah, a heart instead of a checkmark.
But, uh, what, what, what did he, uh, what's going on with him? Is he okay?
Well, I, you have to ask him those questions.
Okay, let's call him up.
You know, yeah, go ahead, go for it.
We'll call him at the end of the show, we're gonna call Councilman Mike Johnson.
Oh, is that gonna be the prank call at the end of the show?
Yeah, 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 what should we, what should we do? Be like, "Hey, I was in your district, and I noticed that there's some, uh, somebody drew some boobies and chalk on the sidewalk, and I just want you to know, this is what's happening in your district."
Good, good, good. He's gonna wanna clean it.
Yeah.
There's no curb cuts in his district.
Alright, so that was a short question, good, um, what are the upcoming agenda items that, uh, the people in Ventura need to know that are coming up, that we need to get involved in, or else something bad's gonna happen?
Well, there's a lot going on, over the next six months, the, um...
Let him know everything.
Why are you talking over her?
The environmental impact report for Main Street will be completed, and then we'll finally decide what is happening here, or not happening.
How do you know it's gonna be completed? Cause they've been kicking that can down the road for awhile.
Don't, don't say kicking the can down the road, you're, you're more intelligent than that, that's like a phrase people use when they can't think of something. Oh, I'm sorry, am I acting like your mother? Yeah, they, well, they haven't, it takes a long time to complete a environmental impact report, and we're now at the place where the actual report is being written and sent out to the community for input, and so, there's a timeline that they can complete it by, or it loses its validity, you have a timeline.
I feel like a lot of things that ha- have happened, though, too, environmentally, so, I think it kinda makes sense if, if you feel like it's been procrastinated, because there's a lot of things that'll affect that whole report, and there's a lot that's actually been happening...
That's right.
In the environment, that's both man-made and not.
Is there any, uh, spoiler alerts or sneak peeks?
Well, this, uh, the world will explode in, you know, 80 years, but until then, uh, this environmental impact report is about the impact of not having traffic on Main Street in these blocks, so that people can still have lunch on the, in the, um, parklets, and enjoy strolling and shopping and walking their dogs.
They should do a mental health survey for that shit.
Yes, you're probably right about that.
Oh, yeah.
But they should do that now, too.
Yeah.
So, um, another important thing that's coming, well, water is on the agenda constantly. Constantly, and disappointing to me, because the state budget suddenly is saying there's no money, um, I really think we have to step up and take responsibility to house unsheltered people. So, coming soon, hopefully, will be the Short-Term Vacation Rental Ordinance, and a lot of people say, "Oh, that doesn't affect rentals," but if you take 700 rental homes off the market, you're gonna increase homelessness. And so, for me, it's important that everybody in the city engage with this, and tell the council what they want, how they can help, how they think we can help to reduce the burden on unsheltered people. It's, climate change is real, we need to protect people.
Stop cutting down trees, can we stop, please, and start planting native trees, please?
Oh, can we get rid of palm trees, please? Can we rip that shit out of here?
Right, they're not native, palm trees are not native.
They are grass, and they are ugly, and they do nothing, and there's, I can just list...
They don't offer shade.
There's 100 things I can list about them, as to why we don't need them, starting with non-natives.
If anybody wants two palm trees, let me know.
So, palm trees are not, or the tree issue is not on the agenda, cause nobody wants to confront it. We have public speakers all the time come and talk about it, we have, uh, a, uh, nonprofit organizations planting trees in schoolyards, cause the kids are getting too hot in the classrooms.
Yeah.
Um, and yet, down by the fairgrounds, 27 trees were trimmed last week, I don't know if Junior had anything to do with that.
Junior, check Junior's Instagram, he can be seen cheering as the tree is cut down.
Oh, really?
No, no, you don't, you didn't.
Yeah, yeah, I'll repost it on our Instagram.
I don't think, I don't think Junior understands.
No, but I don't think also...
He understood that the tree is falling.
No, I think Junior has a job, and he has to obey the boss, and the real tragedy is, I believe they were cut so that people can't climb over the fence and sneak into the X Games.
Yeah, that is correct, too, and then they're gonna put, they're gonna, they're gonna put, um, they're gonna put, um, uh, for cattle, because the fairs coming, and they're gonna have cows, horses, they're gonna put a new whole system down there, so they were making, uh, room for the, for the cattle.
For the cattle?
Mm-hmm, like the cows, like the...
Wait, 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 wait.
They're gonna have cows.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, 27 trees along the road that parallels Surfers Point were trimmed down to the bare bones, almost? There's no, no cattle gonna be there.
No, the other, the street side.
The street side, we had to do it because the X Games wants it, so they can te- televise it, so it could be come on TV.
Oh, they want, they want a view of the ocean...
Yes.
Behind the fancy flips and things, oh, okay.
Yeah, that's when you need the people to be like, "Wait a second."
Right, people need to rise up.
Have you heard of green screen?
Yeah, or you know what, how about drones, or just like, maybe angle it that way more?
Yeah.
Angle the camera that way more, just put it in the tree, I don't know.
Start the camera higher up?
Yeah.
Behind where the ramps are?
Yeah.
So that you can see the ocean above the trees?
How about you skateboard right off the edge of the pier?
There you go, that works, too.
Oh, wow, if the pier is repaired, that would be a great thing, it's almost there.
Hey, if it's not, that's, it's the X Games, who cares?
Yeah.
The, the X Games is on the front of the fairgrounds, you can drive, and you're gonna be able to see the whole...
Surviving the piers, part of the extremism of it.
Yeah, you're gonna even see the, the people that, there are television, eh, with, with Khalifa and everybody, you could even walk and just look up, and you'll see the people...
I have one more part to the answer to that question, that is, uh, water. The, the water project is absorbing all the money of the water agency, the city water agency.
At Marina Park?
Yes, yes, and today, for the second time in a few days, a water main broke, this was, where was it, Casey?
At Mills, and the corner of the mall, and where Starbucks used to be.
At Mills, and the corner of the mall and where Starbucks used to be.
Yeah.
So Dean Drive?
Yes, Dean Drive, by those green apartments in the mall, so right on Mills, that four intersection where the, um, yeah.
And that was the second one, the first one was up by?
Arroyo Verde Park. Monday, cause I was gonna plan...
Oh, that was recent, yeah?
Yeah, I was gonna plan my support group's potluck summer fling at Arroyo Verde, so I know for a fact, it was there.
And the city, the city, uh, website or Instagram account both have photos of that water main from Arroyo Verde, and you can see, it's, it's old. Our infrastructure of, of that system, the water system, the water delivery system, the sewer system, is very old. So, while we're investing so much money at Marina Park, we need to take care of our infrastructure.
Right.
Did you see the thing about Pismo Beach with the hundred gallons of sewage that came from the manhole or whatever, that just went into the creek, Pismo Creek?
So we're happy in Ventura that it's just our water main?
Yeah, 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 that's, uh, we don't want that to happen. Let's, let's take care of stuff, so we don't get shit like that.
Yeah, literally.
Yeah, literally. Yeah.
Um, Jim Duran, um, maybe Liz, you don't wanna, cause he's a colleague of yours, so we'll answer the question. But, uh...
He's a councilman.
He has a pride flag, he has a court case, and he's in District Seven.
Six, he's District Six, yes, the district I live in.
Okay, so what's, what's, is this court case gonna be an impact? Have an impact?
Is not always the most dependable news.
Um, no, cause, yeah.
I, I think, you know, out of respect for him, just like you asked about Councilmember Johnson and why he's leaving, and I can't answer for him, out of respect for Councilmember Duran. He has a church on Santa Clara Street, you could talk to him there, you know, after his church. He does a meal on Sunday mornings with the community, a breakfast, he's probably there, you can just ask him.
Junior, wanna go to a church with me on Sunday?
You need the Lord anyways.
You're working?
Yeah.
What time?
The fairgrounds.
I'll go with you.
Seven at, uh, four.
You wanna go to church and talk to Jim?
What kind of meal is this?
I'll go to church with you, my pa- my parents actually used to go to the River Church when they were having a church inside a house. I have a long history of miss, with Mr. Duran, I used to be like, his youngest, uh, daughter's babysitter, and he's the one that baptized my dad, like, I have like, so you know what I mean, like, I have respect for him in a certain way, so I don't mind going to church with you.
Is it like, Christian Christian?
Yes.
Kinda, is it like, Christian Christian, is it like, I know it's not like Baptist, it's not like Southern Baptist.
Well, I haven't been there for a long time.
You wanna go to church?
This Sunday? Oh, this Sunday is the big move for...
Let's go to church, I'll go to church with you.
Mystery Shop.
I'm gonna come up with an excuse why I can't go.
Okay, wait a second.
It's a Four Square.
I, oh, it's a Four Square, oh, okay, 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 I got you, I got you. Um, I do get the joke on if I'm allowed to go to a church or a holy place, considering my Baphomet tattoo. So that could be a test.
What tattoos are?
My stomach, the devil goat.
Oh.
So that could be a test.
Can you wear a...
Crop top?
Yeah, can you wear a crop top in church? I think that would be humorous for me.
That's kinda fun.
Yeah, is, is that a good idea or bad?
I suggest to go as you are, that's what it says according to the scripture that I read, you're supposed to go as you go, are?
And I've been to Four Square churches, and they are very much like, "Well, you know, we say do it."
I wanna see Mina get baptized and then have like, smoke and steam start coming out of the water, like, "Oh no, it's a devil spawn, everybody run."
Uh, but don't forget, I can host baptisms.
Oh, yeah, in the church of the dude, yeah. Was it Money Lebowski? Uh, Alex Mangjo- Mangjoni, is that how you say his name? Alex Mang...
Alex Mangjone.
Mangjone, yeah, so I, I went to high school with that dude.
Yeah?
Yeah.
How well do you know him?
I've known him for a long time, I don't know him for, uh, very well, I would say, um...
He's a businessman in District Seven.
He's a, I know he reads a lot on the city issues.
He does a lot of work on the, uh, water project.
Yeah. So, he's, he's decided to run for District, uh...
Three.
Three.
No.
Right, no.
Count them, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Seven, okay, so I'm mixing him and Duran up, okay, that's Pier Pont, right?
Yes.
Pier Pont, okay.
Where am I in?
So I guess if he's gonna be in the Pier Pont District, I guess the big question would be, um, what does this stand, some of the vacation rentals? Because...
I mean, close.
That, that's like, the mecca of vacation rentals would be the Pier Pont District.
I, is that true? Cause the avenue is having a large amount of rentals too, aren't they?
Okay, for, for many years, Pier Pont has been the main place for vacation rentals, because it's right at the ocean. And because people could afford buying a second home there.
And they're nice, yeah, they're nice houses, they're good Airbnbs.
But, well, an Airbnb, you know, kind of has the connotation of being, cause bed and breakfast, you live in the house with someone and they serve you breakfast, and then you go your way.
That's how it used to be.
A short-term vacation rental is an independent property you rent from someone. And you live in it and they're not there, and the absence of the landlord sometimes is where problems were created. You know, I rent it and then I bring five hundred people from LA County with me and we party all night, it kind of offends the neighbors. So, that's where the, the mainstay was. Pier Pont also are mostly licensed short-term vacation rentals.
Got it.
But now, so our city website says there's about three hundred, three hundred twenty short-term vacation rentals. But if you go to the Airbnb website, you'll find seven hundred. Because there's so many unlicensed.
Right.
I've been trying to get the city to take seriously that and enforce the requirement of licenses. Because if we institute fines on that, we'll be able to fix the potholes quick.
Good luck. I've, just, uh, I, I had a neighbor that they were renting an illegal Airbnb, and, um, I reported it to the city, because we used to have these crackheads, like, every day, it was like a new crackhead. And then I couldn't get to work one day, cause they left their car behind my car, and, uh, we're gone for the day.
In your driveway.
In my driveway, you know, it was all this kinda bullshit, you know, so I was reporting them, and then they're like, "Uh, I'm sorry, like, we need proof," and I was like, "Well, what would constitute proof?" And they said photographs, so I sent them photographs of ten different people, and I sent it to them, and just no answer. And I was like, "Hey, I'm just following up, I gave you proof," and they're like, "We don't know if those are regular people, if those are the tenants," and I was like, "Well, what the fuck do you want?" And they were like, "A picture of a person walking in the door," or something like that. And I'm like, "These are crackheads, you know, I'm not gonna roll up on them and take a picture of them while they're entering their house," I mean...
Yeah.
It's, it's insane, and, um, I think if you had a security cam, maybe, but even that, I don't think that's proof. And then even if they have proof, they're not gonna do anything.
Well, and...
My opinion.
People, people with money and lots of property tend to have a lot more power than people without. And so, lobbying the city...
King of the North.
If you're, if you're poor, or if you work a, a second job, or if you just don't have a lot of time, takes time. And unless we all get together as citizens and come and say, "We can't stand this, you have to change this," it won't change. It, there has to be really large-scale email campaigns and coming to council.
So we gotta ask this Alex guy, what, what he's gonna do about it.
Yes.
He got something to say, too.
Okay.
How many, can you answer this, I don't know if you can or not? But when you have a voucher, how many times can they give you the voucher when it expires?
Okay, you mean the Section Eight voucher?
Yes.
So...
I know why you're asking this.
If you, at the, so if you have a voucher for, say, ninety days, and it's due to expire July first, before that, there's a form you file requesting an extension. That form can usually be found on their website. You have to include with that form a list of all the places you tried to rent, and what the result was. So, I spoke to them, they said, "It's not available," or I went there, they said they don't take kids, or I paid the money for the credit check, and then they never called me back. And, you know, you list that, and then you turn that in with the request for an extension, then you should get another ninety days.
No, not me.
Did you turn all that paperwork in?
I did, I did everything before, I got all the paperwork signed, you know? Everything that you're supposed to do, and they told me that I was supposed to get at, at least three vouchers.
Wait, that's at least?
I only got one, and when I tried to get a second voucher, they took it away, and they didn't give me nothing. So they basically put me on the waiting list again.
Is it income-based too? Like, isn't it based on a...
Did you tell them you're the King of the North?
It, it's, there's, there's income-based, but, you know, the number of children he has kind of increases the amount he can earn.
Does it matter if they're adults or not, like eighteen or older, and it doesn't matter if they live in the home? These are actually just curiosity questions of someone who's worked in housing.
And those do make a difference. Um, the other thing is, the Housing Authority, although it carries the name of the city, isn't under the control of the city, so to complain, you have to go to the CEO. They, they recently changed and got a new CEO, and I'm hoping he's running things better than previously. But, um, I mean, I, I know, it's a fifteen-year waiting list, so it's not gonna help you right now.
Crazy, even the low, isn't like the low-income housing one, that one's like, uh, that's a, that's a long list, too.
Well, the, yeah, and there's the Section Eight Choice Voucher, where you can live anywhere, you can find a landlord. And then there's project-based, they're vouchers, but it stays with the project. And those are all the buildings that are owned by the Housing Authority, but it's the same qualifications.
Have they changed any of it since the raises in rent and the raises in like, the economy in general? Have they changed anything?
Well, allegedly, the average income in Ventura is at a certain place, and they base the, what fair market rent is on that. So fair market rent in Ventura County is about two thousand three hundred for a two-bedroom apartment.
Hmm, yeah.
But we all know, the apartment's right here on the avenue, on the corner of the Avenue and Thompson. Two-bedroom apartment is nearly five thousand dollars a month.
Oh, the one...
And it's this way all over town.
Yeah, the ones I moved out of are like, and they're smaller and not updated, and landlord problems and everything. The ones down here, they're like twenty-six hundred, and it's a two-one, and you wanna talk about, I had crackheads on my stairs.
Yeah.
When I lived upstairs, and I'm like, "How the fuck am I supposed to leave?"
Wait, that's illegal?
Yeah.
And that's a serious problem.
And they're one of the ones who raised, as soon as like, COVID hit and everything, and, uh, like, they were one of the ones who they raised the max amount that they could on, so...
Every year, every year, raise it up, raise it up, raise it up.
Raise it up, yeah, so, there, yeah.
Next person that comes down gets this Ice Cube hoodie, brand new with the tag still on it.
Wait, I wanna see that.
Whoa.
Tags are still on it?
What, what size is that? Did that, did I leave that in your studio?
This is a, uh, size... It's a large, okay?
A large.
If nobody claims it, I'll just be taking it home.
As far as I know, nobody, never been worn as well, so, yeah, it's brand new, Ice Cube, um... I remember playing his album while my mom was, uh, driving me when I was twelve years old, and she was shocked.
I guess he left it in your studio.
Yeah.
Ice Cube himself, yeah, I don't remember that show, yeah.
Well, you don't remember all the shows, do you?
That's true, it could've been one of those, it was a super high show.
It was in a pink bag, like in a, like, present bag.
That is so weird.
Two ninety-four, we're going, this show's gonna last another few minutes, so get down here before the show ends if you want this free Ice Cube hoodie. Also, Junior's giving out a free Ventura Tide Pod t-shirt as well.
Ooh, wait, let's talk about your shirt you're wearing right now, I love that.
These are gonna be the new ones, uh, coming out, with the, uh, Smoking Rabbit Ventura Tide Pod, I got one for you, Mina.
So good.
That's beautiful.
Yeah, we only have two in existence right now, but there will be more. Um, if the people want it, we will provide it for them.
Um...
I don't get one?
I made you one too, but it has a... I gave you King of the North, come on, man.
I was gonna say, Junior.
Jesus Christ, Junior.
You're the King of the North, you can make your own t-shirt.
Fucking King of the North.
While we're on, real quick.
Still once more.
Yes.
Um, tomorrow, uh, we, you know, everybody likes to shop locals, more to the community, all that. Um, tomorrow Majestic Theater is the Toy Con, okay? Daniel's Toy Emporium, he's a cool guy, he just moved down to, uh, Main Street, he's in the Mason Building. Okay, little section, super cool collection, that's all I gotta say, it's some good stuff. Um, but he hosts the Toy Con at the Majestic Theater every year, this year's tomorrow. So if you're a collector of any kind, or you just wanna pay a couple bucks to go look at some cool stuff and hang out with other nerds, um, go check it out, Mystery Shop, we're also gonna be there tomorrow. So, you can always say hi, and then Sunday is the day, so the next day, it's a big weekend. We're supposed to do the big move, really get everything over to Oxnard.
And also on Sunday, we have the Pizza and Dignity Year Wonder fundraiser at Plaza Park, starting at two?
After church.
Yeah, see, it'd be an all-day thing.
And the Mystery Shop's moving down the street from Plaza Park, so I'll have to come.
Plaza Park Ventura.
Oh, Ventura, there's two?
Ventura.
Okay, I have a gripe with everyone, stop naming things the same thing. When people say Ventura Boulevard even, they'll be like, "In Burbank," I'm like, "The fuck? Why is this everywhere?"
Obviously, you've never lived in Atlanta, where they have, I think, a hundred and forty-five peach trees.
I live under a rock.
Peach Lane, Peach Street, Peach Cove.
I don't like these things, I have a bad enough time with directions, this doesn't work for me, it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But anyways, back and forth.
When did California Street become C Street?
What?
I saw it on a flyer. I've never heard it's called C Street.
C for California.
Yeah.
Right, like, I saw it on a flyer, I think it was for like, the X Games or something, and I was talking about the Black Hall. Shout out to Black Hall, love you, Dave.
The kids who used to go smoke dope under the pier always called it C Street.
Oh, okay.
See, I didn't smoke dope, so I missed all.
There you go.
I mean, you can still do it.
Call it C Street, yes.
On camera, perfect. Great job for mayor, see, you guys are gonna cut the hookups.
You smoked dope, and then all get baptized, it'll be an experimental show.
Live, going live.
It'll be fine, we'll see what happens.
I'm gonna like, I'm gonna smoke a joint and stick it in your, uh, belly button, so that it looks like the goat's smoking it down in the middle of church.
I'm not mad about that.
Yep. Um, this, this question is for Liz, Liz, um, I've watched you in like, some of these meetings, and to me, you seem like maybe the smartest person in the room.
Right, thank you, but...
Do you let people underestimate you sometimes?
Well, you know, it's an interesting society we live in. So there are a lot of people who see me in a wheelchair and think I'm an imbecile.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I met some people who came into one of the local shops a couple days ago, and the owner of the shop said, "Oh, this is Liz, our city council member," and they went, "Yeah, right."
Mm-hmm.
They went, "Huh?"
Happens all the time.
Really?
So I gave him a business card and said, "You know, email me if you need anything," you know? So, people do underestimate, underestimate me...
Right.
In part because of my disability.
Right.
Also, I don't like to waste time talking about everything. I think about it, I ask the questions that I need to ask, and I make a decision of what's best for my community.
One time when I was out here, um, I saw you, Liz, and you were just enjoying your time, and this tall, white, bald man was like, pestering you, like, I could see, and he was very passionate sounding.
Pester?
Yeah, and I could just kinda hear, and I was just like, "I'm a fucking like, I'm a fucking interrupt this shit." I got in the mode, and, but she, you handled it so well, like, so gracefully, and I was, I think the guy was maybe hoping for a rise or something, but the way you handled it, I was like, "I just wanna fucking deck him still." But it was, it was really, it was really cool to see like, that like, kinda like behind the scenes of like what actually happens. And then how gracefully you can handle it.
Thank you.
What what was he?
I don't know, he was, he was a walking, talking dick. That's all that matters. And even when he walked away, I was like, I don't.
I'm not sure that's what his name was, but he was, he was trying to tell me.
That you're so amazing.
About Schumash history. Which is made up in his head. And you know, you can't, you just gotta let him ramble on for a moment and then stop then. I also grew up with five brothers, so I know when to hold them and when to fold them.
I wanted to ask you.
Me or? You gotta hop on the mic, bro.
I just wanted to ask, what do you think about Spencer going to Ventura Fairgrounds? And telling people that the Fairgrounds is gonna be turning into a baseball field?
Well, Junior, that's an amazing question, but it's water under the bridge. It was long ago and what happened at that meeting? You know, the the actual meeting they held about it? I think um, two people were in favor of a baseball park and five hundred and eighty-six were against it. So doesn't matter who said it, you know? Keep yourself together there.
He lost.
You know, everybody has a a purpose in society and if nothing else, Spencer gets people to to look at what's going on at the city. They find out often that he's wrong, but then they're educated. So you you gotta give him that.
Maybe they learn to check their source.
Yeah, but it's good that uh, he's bringing attention to stuff and then people like, find out how to get the real story. Which is really all that matters. The more informed people are, the better. Are you for uh, or against a baseball field at the Fairgrounds?
Yes or no, Junior?
No, what are you for?
I wanna, I just wanted to keep it the way it is. It's history.
But with trees.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, no.
Without the trees, keep it the way.
Trees, those trees were for the X Games because they want the view for the ocean. And they're gonna put a a a stage right there too, because Wiz Khalifa's coming and he wants the ocean view too.
I will happily talk shit to the X Games and Wiz Khalifa about the lack of trees.
Khalifa, are you happy?
Wiz Khalifa, no. I would, I'd say, you know what, I prefer trees over Wiz Khalifa.
And you know what, we're we're living in a time, still, even with what we're seeing in the world. People are dying, like five hundred people have died in in Arizona since the first of this year. Because the heat is so excessive there. They they're not by the ocean, they're a kind of a landlocked little place.
As many trees.
Don't have trees, they don't have water. So, and it's not just Arizona, it's India, it's Africa, it's across Europe. We're blessed here.
Industrial society and its future.
I grew up in um, California desert, you know, and it's it's hard, especially in smaller communities when you don't even have access to resources.
That's right.
Or like, um, even like public transportation, it's a big deal. If you have public transportation, instead of having to walk even just a couple blocks. It makes a huge, 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 huge difference.
That's why I like those e-bikes actually.
Well, the, you know, they they serve a purpose. The unfortunately, cities all over the state have this similar problem with us with people who are too young or too immature to handle them right. And so the state is now changing their law and soon you will have to be eighteen years old and have a driver's license.
Well, some of them are souped up to be like above what, cause there are like even on mopeds and stuff. You can be under a certain, um, CC? And yeah, under a certain CC, I can't remember what it was, and you don't need a license. But the e-bikes are getting like more and more like cool and fast.
Well, the the thing is, they, in the state of California, like we have the special um, catalytic converter on the car to keep the smog down. The e-bikes in the state of California have regulators on them to keep the speed down. But you know, kids and computers and things, they quickly figure out how to pop that off.
Oh yeah, I wouldn't exactly do that.
You can go online and and purchase from other states. Uh, a little tiny, little tiny in increment, implement that will then double the speed. So if you've popped off.
Fasten the furious e-bike style.
Yeah, and so those are, those e-bikes will always be confiscated if they're caught. And they're gonna be considered motorcycles if they go over, I think it's twenty-five miles an hour. It's it's working through the committees right now in the state legislature.
And so it also makes them more dangerous too, cause if you're going that speed, you should know, you should, I see, I actually do see some kids and adults use proper bicycle signals, but I think it's super cool. Do your signals. I think drivers should know the signals too. Um, but yeah, like they get, they get dangerous, especially if you're not wearing helmets, things like that, like you can get seriously hurt or worse. Especially kids when it's just like, child.
And they don't, you know, they're, they, kids like the adrenaline, cause they haven't had it all their life. That's an adrenaline rush for them, that high speed.
I like going fast.
But what happens is they also don't have the. They don't know when to stop. They don't know when to control that.
I was coming out of the, out of the Fairgrounds and I thought, cause you know how they, they do a willy and then they go. I was like, what is this guy doing? So I, I go, I'm going straight and he's coming towards me, but with the willy up and I'm like, I don't know what you're doing, bro.
Listen, kids, Junior's driving high as fuck. You don't wanna be do, you're putting your life in his hands.
I need to play a voice message someone sent me. I love her, I need to play this. I do have to play this, it does have to do with the Tide Pod.
Uh, guys, that reminds me, we have to play some of our voice messages while we weren't doing a show as well. Here, you can plug your phone into this, Mina, and uh, it should play, you know.
Alright, and let me find it too. Oh, this is it.
Is this gonna be like another guy, like wondering why your OnlyFans is?
No, hold on a second. And I was behind, like next to this truck that had like, the dirtiest fucking window you've ever seen in your life. I mean, like an inch of dirt on the back of the window, there's absolutely no way that he can see out his fucking rearview mirror. But in the dirt is written Ventura Tide Pod YouTube, but he spelled tube wrong. He spelled it like T U E B, I don't know. Um, and it's just like this, like I'd say fifty, sixty year old Mexican man, he's got his cowboy hat. And like he's straight vibing to whatever he's listening to. And then like, he, all of a sudden, just starts driving at like fifteen miles per hour on this fifty mile per hour road and he's still back there, just causing a traffic jam. Um, but anyways, I guess shout out to Ventura Tide Pod.
Is that your bald uncle?
Yeah, I just, I'm waiting to share that, um.
It was the shout out that was.
That's funny as shit, dude.
So everybody, if you can't afford to, uh, if you can't afford to wash your truck, leave a message for Ventura Tide Pod.
I guess we need to get some stickers or something.
We should get decals and stuff, yeah.
I feel like people get stickers before they have their first episode. We've done like a hundred and we have, yet to have one sticker.
We can also do the QR code one, those are cool.
I'm looking for our, our voicemail. I I cannot uh, confirm or deny if this is good.
I will hold this. Also shout out to Uno, um, and Seven Records. I wear this hat like all the time. It's my favorite hat.
It's a beautiful hat.
Felt like uh, sharing some of my random thoughts of the day with you guys. I figured out Batman's superpower. It's white privilege. I was driving and I saw a sign that said, no right turn. That sign has humanity all figured out. The only difference between our two political parties, that the Democrats, they'll put a Black Lives Matter sticker on the knife before stabbing us in the back. Refried beans is really Mexico's hummus.
I don't know who that was and uh, that was the first time I heard it and uh, sorry, everyone for playing that, I don't know. I'm confused. He was high as fuck. Yeah, definitely. Um, Junior, find me the phone number for uh, Crystal Lodge, please, alright? Uh, one other thing I wanted to say to each of you because both of you are in the political arena.
I don't have a knife, okay? I promise, I don't have a knife.
If you did, it's legal.
If it's not concealed.
Yeah, Ventura is the stabbing capital of the world, don't you know that? Not a lot of shootings, but we got a lot of stabbings up in here. Yeah, that one dude was shooting at kids on the beach, you hear about that? Yeah, that was a friend of mine's neighbor. Uh, I wanted to give you each uh, a couple moments just to say whatever you want to the city of Ventura. Go ahead. I know, you're, first to you Casey and then uh, Liz.
Uh, totally on the spur of the moment. You know, and I wanna generally say thank you for everyone who has taken time to sincerely educate themselves, to sincerely hear our Schumash voices. And to respect it and to truly desire to come along and collaborate with us in a good way. And more and more people are speaking up at city council, acknowledging that this is unceded Schumash land. And you guys are choosing this on your own and I sincerely thank you. And you know, I'm talking about this, I had a realization yesterday that I parked behind Eckerd Green. And you know, I avoided that spot, um, ever since I knew that metal was in the corner of the mission. Like I didn't want to be anywhere near there because as a kid, when we drove by, my dad would drive by. I always told my dad, I'm like, daddy, I'm taking that down, I'm taking that. And it was like a little tiny kid, I just knew that I was gonna do that. And you know, I I know I didn't do it by myself and I thank everybody who had sent emails and spoke at city meetings and whatnot. So like that has always been a sincere trigger at mine. And knowing that it got moved back in that mission spot, I didn't wanna see it because I have been on a sincere individual healing journey. And I, I thought seeing that piece of metal was gonna re-trigger me. I, and I didn't want to do that out of respect of the time I have been taking for healing. And for, you know, trying to do things in a good way, like I've always advocate and taking it into consideration that my self-healing is part of doing things in a good way, especially where I'm um, grateful and blessed to be as a city art and culture commissioner, as my political journey, as you, as everything that the people have allowed me to be. And so, um, I always avoided seeing that metal. I wanted to never see it again.
Fuck that metal.
But uh, we did open mic at Eckerd Green last night and I had a car full of groceries to help feed the people that was at open mic. And it was easier to park in the back to drop off the groceries and I was like, okay, you know what? Like I feel, I feel good, it's summer solstice, I know that I'm on a good way, I feel like I can, I can do this. And so when I came out of my car to start unloading the stuff, the first time I saw that, uh, the metal in that corner, you know, I, I had peace. I I was truly aware of the healing that I have been blessed to endure. And truly seeing that really brought to my attention of the healing, about the love, about the pure good things that are happening in our city, cause there are good things, there are good people. And because of that support and that sincere love that people have given me and other Schumash members, especially our traditional Schumash elder Julie Tomine Stensley, I am aware of that healing and I'm so incredibly grateful to know that I had peace. Cause to me, when I saw it, I realized that that's where it belongs. It belongs there. It belongs there for people who want to believe the other side, you know? Go ahead, I can't change you, I can't change everybody. I can tell my truth, I can educate, I can love. But that's still not gonna be good enough to change some people who want to be just tied to their story. And for those people, they should have that place to go do see that statue, you know? Like they, they think the statue talked to them, they wanna pay homage, they, you know, that's not, I'm good for you. And it's not anywhere that the public must see it. It's not blocking the ocean from city hall. It's not a constant in your face. So I'm really grateful for that journey that I've been on. And you know, um, it really is amazing to know that I wasn't triggered and I wanted to be mad, you know? I am not perfect. When I saw it, I was kinda shocked that I wasn't mad. I, there was a part of me that was like, but you know, I was like, great, you know? It's not worth it, like I, it's, it's a good thing, it's a healing and it's, um, yeah, so I'm really in a moment where I'm really grateful for everyone who has been a part, and it's been four years about. Um, yesterday was the start of four years and for every single person who played a role in this journey who have come along my path to support me, to encourage me, to truly accept me for and give me the patience to do this healing that I had to do, to lead and to support our city in a good way. And you know, I'm just really grateful. I'm grateful for you guys, you know, you guys have been doing the work in the city for three years now. What? Thank you.
You're welcome.
And so, yeah, I'm just truly, I'm truly, truly happy and I'm truly, uh, I'm appreciative and grateful because. It's a good thing and you know, we can talk about all the bullshit that's going on in the city. Yeah, from, you know, our water mains breaking to our trees cutting down, but we people, us citizens, we need to find a race to come together and continue healing and during the good work because our city is worth it. And yeah.
Alright, well said. People playing uh, magic are. Full standing ovation in the back there.
Next time, next time I'm going first.
Yeah, it's a tough act to follow, Liz. Uh, would you speak to the people of Ventura?
Actually, it's, Casey's never a tough act to follow, cause it, she's totally honest and sincere. Uh, you know, my message is just who I am. We have to be more kind to each other. Doesn't matter who we are or where you come from, rich or poor, we just have to accept each other and be kind to each other. Then life will move forward.
Alright, I like that one. The magic.
I'm bow.
So I think we should call Crystal Lodge and just say, thank you on that note. And just be, try to spread some positivity to the Crystal Lodge, because I feel like we always call them and it's always so negative.
Thank you for being so cool with us.
Just, hey, just thank you, I love your sign. Every time I walk by it, it brings joy to my heart.
Hey, I like that. I'm really glad I'm a part of that, I love that.
Okay, go ahead Junior, call them. Alright, so we're calling the Crystal Lodge. By the way, new t-shirts coming out of uh, our Crystal Lodge photo.
Sign me up.
Yeah, alright, crank it up. Am I talking?
Crystal Lodge, I can help you?
Hey, how you doing? Um, you know, I just wanted to say thank you for just the beauty of the sign. I love that sign, it brings light to the neighborhood on Thompson Boulevard. And uh, I know sometimes we call and we can be negative, but I just wanted to say something positive to you guys right off the bat. And then uh, if you don't mind, uh, we all like to say something positive.
Do they know it's us?
No, um, here's uh, go ahead, say something positive about the Crystal Lodge, go ahead Junior.
Yeah, thank, thank you for lighting up that light and that name. We really appreciate.
He hung up.
Isn't it really?
No, he just.
They hung up on us, yeah. We don't know why, yeah.
You never know what motivates another person. All you can do is know what you're doing.
That's what you were saying, cause I asked if they knew or we were, I was like.
Who knows, yeah, it's been a while since we called them, so.
They're like, they're back. They waited a while though, they gave us some time.
I I wanted to say this is the start of season three.
Yeah, it is. Any electricians out there, um, get in touch with us.
Tap in electricians.
But really, that's kinda a lesson for us.
Tap in, tap in on the Ventura.
Seriously, it's a lesson, you know, we had the greatest intention. And we wanted to do a good thing and sometimes when our intention is to do someone a blessing and do something kind, it doesn't go necessarily the right way and it's okay, we made the attempt and.
Are you calling Mike Johnson?
Yeah, uh, let's call him Mike Johnson and just say.
Daniel, what's going on with you, bro? Hit us up.
Junior's on a different show right now.
Because he's king of the north.
King of the north, king of the north.
I don't know if I have his number. Oh, I do, yeah.
That picture went hard though.
Thank you, postrits.
You got a.
Ventura Tide Pod HR's on the phone, don't touch Mina.
Hi, Mike?
Yep, hey, what's up? You're on the Ventura Tide Pod with Liz Campos and Casey Rodriguez. Hey, what's up? Hey, we're live right now, just, uh, but you came up in the conversation and uh, we're just thinking, why don't we just call them? Because we don't know what's going on with you, man.
Alright, well, what's going on with me, you know what, I did a bunch of yard work today and I'm putting in a new sprinkler system.
It's hot out though.
Do you do, are you doing that yourself or do you hire somebody?
Yeah, no, I'm doing that myself.
Uh, wait, do you know an electrician? Are you an electrician? Can you be an electrician?
I do some elect, I can do some electrical work, but one needs a permit for that, right? Can't do that, can't do that.
Okay, we can't, we'll talk off the, yeah, there's nothing uh, up to code about the Ventura Tide Pod studio.
Including the people.
Yeah, um, anyways, you're on with uh, Liz Campos and uh, Casey and we were wondering like, uh, the word is you retire, are you retiring?
Well, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm not running for reelection.
Why not?
If that's what you mean, you know what, there's a lot of reasons. A lot of reasons, a part of it is, you know, I've, I've given a lot and. I, I don't think I could do another four years like the last four years, I really don't. I really don't, this job is, is taking a lot from me. It's sad, but it's true.
Do you have hobbies?
Well, you know, I'm out there putting in an irrigation system.
That doesn't sound like a hobby.
Wow, sign me up for that club.
Right now, right now we have Magic the Gathering, if you want to join a new hobby.
Mike, tell them about your dog. Tell them about your lovely beautiful dog.
Yeah, I got Daisy Dog, so that's my hobby, is I take Daisy Dog, we go for walks two, three times a day.
Oh, what kind of dog, what kind of puppy?
She's a mix, she's a mix.
Oh, big dog, little dog, big baby, tiny baby?
She's like eighty pounds.
Oh, it's a big baby, fluffy?
Yes, yes, well, sort of fluffy, she has long enough hair so that it sheds a lot. It's a lot of, it's a lot of loose hair in the house and like.
She sounds like a Daisy, oh my goodness, can you send a picture to the Ventura Tide Pod?
I would be happy to.
A curly tail, is she like Chow, is she husky, what is this?
Yeah, she's part Chow, she's part Chow, that's great.
Knew it was Chow, oh my, I know my breeds.
She's beautiful.
Her ears are kind of like halfway between, they're kind of like half flop ears, does that make sense?
Like a bear, she's like a, just a baby bear.
Mike, what if, what if you ran for reelection, but instead of caring, you just didn't give a shit?
What if Daisy ran for election?
You did like that movie Office Space where you just roll in there, guns blazing and you just don't care, you know? Like a lot like Donald Trump does.
It's the movie Bullworth, that's like, the guy runs for president, he doesn't care.
Yeah, that's a great, great example, you want to do Bullworth?
No, you know what it is, yeah, there have been so many slow motion train wrecks and, and I, I ran for council thinking I could stop them and I couldn't.
Did you slow them down, you think?
No.
I have an idea, maybe you should bring Daisy as a distraction and as the positive reinforcement.
Mina, Mina's your new campaign manager.
Positive reinforcement, it's fine.
Alright, so you're just done, huh?
I think she'll get tired at these council meetings.
Then that's what is, when Daisy gets grumpy, that's it, that's it.
Yeah.
Well, you know what's cool is like, if you do, if you are actually retiring, I'll believe it when it happens, but um, that means you can, you don't have to hold back and be polite.
Exactly, I'm already, I'm already not.
Yeah, so we.
Make an Instagram account called Mike Not Polite. All your real thoughts.
Mike tells it as it is.
Hey, you know what, I have a, I have like a, a monthly newsletter that I send out.
No way?
It's, it's the unvarnished truth.
That's right.
Anybody wants it, anybody wants it can go to MikeForVentura.com.
Done.
Sign up and hit my.
MikeForVentura.com, I didn't.
Are you announcing Daisy in it too?
Am I announcing Daisy on it?
Does she have her own little corner, like her own little section, like Daisy's corner?
No, it's just, it's just city council stuff and it's, it's what's going on behind the scenes.
I think you need to have a feel-good corner, like at the very bottom corner, so people have to read through the whole thing to get to the bottom, to see like a smiling dog.
Or just give Daisy her own page.
That too, Daisy can have her own page.
Would, would you be interested in doing a, like a five-minute politics update, guns a-blazing, every uh, show or every week?
Well, not every, not every show, not every week, but sure, sometimes.
Okay.
He's gonna start, he's gonna start blocking us.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm real active on Reddit and, and that, you know, that's.
Reddit's so good.
Yeah, Reddit's, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm pretty clear about where things are on Reddit.
Yeah. We, I know, I've been watching, I've been watching.
Yeah.
Yeah, hey, check in on the Ventura Tide Pod Reddit subreddit, we just started it today.
Oh, congratulations.
Well, I did have a congratulations, I feel, all I did was spend two, two minutes while I was taking a shit and I set it up, so I don't know if I need a congratulations, but you know. It's up.
Yeah.
Yeah, now nobody's joining.
You're just moving forward, it's fine.
Alright, well, sad to see that you're retiring, but I'm happy that um, Uncensored Mike is about to emerge.
It's, you know what, it's, I can't imagine all the stuff we've got, we have going on this summer, I can't imagine trying to do the right thing while also worrying about a campaign, so.
You wouldn't have to worry.
You'll see me, you'll see me unload a bit on Tuesday, there are some places where.
Everybody tune into the council meeting on Tuesday, watch Mike.
Yeah, yeah, you're gonna see me try to, you're gonna see me try to convince my colleagues to all vote no on a couple of things.
It will be Mike on fire.
Tuesday, Tuesday, special teams, special council, special community.
Anything you want to say to the people of Ventura right now?
You know what, the X Games are coming up and uh, let's just, let's just hope that the weather stays good and everybody be nice to all these tourists and let them come here and spend their money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, Junior, you want to say anything to Mike Johnson before he hangs up?
Yeah, so when are we gonna have lunch, Mike Johnson? I'll take you out to lunch.
Alright, yeah, well.
Just let us know when and.
Send me a text offline.
Yes, sir.
Anybody wants to text me, eight oh five, two five, three, two, three, four, five.
That's bold.
That's bold of you, sir.
Eight oh five, two five, three, two, three, four, five, no, I mean, I get lots of texts from lots of people, that's how I keep in touch with them.
Alright, and that motherfucker that keeps fart, calling us and farting, don't, don't.
We only have like five followers, so he's like, those five people, it's fine.
Yeah, all five of them are uh, degenerates, yeah.
Well, I will, I will be sure to talk to the mayor and tell him to stop calling you and farting.
Schroeder.
Alright, alright, we'll have a good evening.
He does it to me too.
Thank you, bye Daisy.
Good night, bye.
Alright, you guys have a good day, alright, thanks for calling, bye.
Alright, there you have it.
It's almost ten o'clock and he just answers and he sounds wide awake, okay.
He's retired, you know, yeah.
Yeah, he sleeps till noon, so.
Alright, I may, how did AI uh, make a song for us um, to go out on, um, any last words while I'm bringing it up?
Do we trust AI?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't know.
You know what, it is what it is, ooh, wait, did you see a thing about aliens? Go Google that while we're doing this.
Starting the show up again?
I feel like aliens, I keep watching Connect the Coast and we talked about aliens, it's a river.
Whoa.
Thank you, Junior.
It sounds like the king of the north, what a cool song.
King of the north.
King of the ner.
This is the wrong song.
King of the ner?
But this is still the king of the north.
It's kind of like.
No, Junior.
King of the ner. King of the ner.
Junior, HR.
Don't touch him, I was just saying, king of the ner.
Yes.
Alright, everybody.
I feel like I should like.
Thanks for watching, is Fusion gonna hop on after the show and do another one?
Where is, oh my god, he's been right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey Fusion? I didn't know you were there.
Yeah. You're sweating, take off your shirt.
Yeah, like chipping down music?
Alright, we're gonna get Fusion on after this. Have him sit right here. I have some questions for you.
Waifu, come here, come here.
Hey, I met your brother today. Yeah, alright, this is a farewell to the mystery shop, they've been so kind to us.
This is our thank you.
This is a song for you. Here, sit right here next to him. Everybody scoot to the right, scoot to the right, Junior, maybe move that skirt.
Rita said that's close enough.
HR, Junior, hand me a headphone, hand me, hand me a headphone. Give him, he's furnishing a headphone, thank you. This is a song about the mystery spa and Liz Campos.
Yes, good night.
You guys want to interview Fusion?
Sure, why not?
We'll keep the show going.
How do you feel about leaving Ventura and going to Oxnard, that's a big question.
I don't know.
What do you mean, you don't know?
I don't know, it's gonna be a different experience.
How do you feel about the Oxnard community so far?
So far, pretty positive. It's been a positive community so far.
Explain the location.
He has to say that.
What's that?
The Oxnard's been positive.
Sure.
It actually has, oh my god, so we needed a Band-Aid the other day because our window painter cut himself because why, why wouldn't he? And I went next door and the tattoo shop was so nice, I was like, guys, give me a Band-Aid or give me some Sanaderm and they gave me Sanaderm and they gave me stickers.
They did.
So that is very nice.
Like, we better help this pregnant lady out.
Have you enjoyed your time on Main Street?
Oh, totally, totally. I mean, it's been a great experience with the street closure, the events, I mean, it's been a really good experience.
Great, remember to remind everybody that you started out in District One.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, we're gonna miss you a lot.
Oh, I'm gonna miss it too, but it's uh, the community over there is a little different, I mean, we're so close to Heritage Park, you know, everything they do over there.
You are really in the thick of things where you're moving, it's great, it's great.
It's like moving to California streets over here.
Yeah, except that that is so close to their transit center.
Yes.
We can all go visit you there.
Indeed, we are just across the street from the transit center.
Oh, and the coffee nearby is pretty freaking good.
You haven't had Heritage Square coffee yet.
Um, I went to the, I went into Woolworth Building and they had this like Mexican style with the Cafe de Olla and like the pastries and stuff, it was, it was pretty.
I've been there.
It's good, yeah, it's good, now I gotta go to Heritage, yes.
Talking about Heritage Square, we can't talk without giving a shout out and a love memory to our amazing beloved late supervisor Carmen Ramirez.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's where my mind goes, because you know, she was a solid, straight up mentor and a friend and I am so grateful and I'm always going to connect her with Heritage Square and. Me really part of Oxnard, she truly loved Oxnard City.
And if she were still with us, she would be right there at your ribbon cutting, opening up the mystery shop in Oxnard, she would.
Are you gonna cut a ribbon?
I'm gonna see about it.
No, 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 no. We're going to actually, there's not gonna be a ribbon, we're gonna hire a bunch of strippers dressed in different attire.
That's, that's a ribbon cutting.
Are you gonna have a G-string cutting?
Yes, and then they are going to make themselves a ribbon and Fusion's just gonna barrel through like Red Rover, Red Rover.
Oh my gosh.
And if he makes it through the door, it's officially opened, if not, sorry, you don't get it anymore.
It's like Groundhog, it's like Groundhog Day, sorry, another month.
Right?
Yeah, so be prepared.
Oh my gosh.
Are you gonna have a stripper pole in your new, your new place? That's what Mina said you were gonna have.
Healing doesn't allow it, sorry.
Yet, we haven't, we haven't fully looked at it.
Good, good.
No.
Alright, what, what kind of um, uh, music acts are you gonna open with?
Um, I'm not entirely sure.
Hey, that's future.
I'm not responsible for this.
There's so many things. We don't have a grand opening set yet, right? We don't have a grand.
July 6th, do we have any?
Junior, let, let him sit next to you. Here, come over here, come over here, get on the mic. No, we got another headphone for him.
I think Kenny can move up, I think.
No, say, say where the skeleton is, move the skeleton. We don't need the skeleton, the skeleton hasn't done anything for this show.
No, bye.
Yeah.
Oh my god, no.
Oh my god.
I'm plugged in.
I know, but he's not on the fucking camera.
Should I get on the couch?
Yeah, get on the couch, sit on Junior's. Come on, come on, everybody, here, I'll scoot over here, Fusion, get on my lap.
This is, this is the friend's couch.
Yeah, yeah, is this the most people ever on that couch, Mina's uh.
Totally, the, the most amount, now that we had enough band members to fill up the couch.
There you go, look, look, you got all that diagonal space.
I really thought the cracking was the cracking of the couch.
Okay, good, 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 alright. Schmiegels here.
That's just one happy family.
Totally.
I feel like it right now.
Why don't you guys?
Like an arrow or something to Oxnard.
Alright, if I was Jake, I'd be able to do a Schmiegel impression.
Oh, totally.
I know, he's supposed to come by, alright, what kind of music acts are we uh, gonna open up, what's the, what's the strategy here? Yeah.
Okay, well, initially, it was gonna be Los Solos, but because of some complications with scheduling, we're gonna have a DJ that, uh, we're gonna have some DJs first of all. First of all, we have DJs down, okay, we're gonna have Eric Bae from Yay Records, he's gonna be DJing. We're also going to have um, Ed from Los Solos, he will be DJing some soul music. And uh, so we're gonna have that kind of going, because it's gonna be kind of like a long, it's not gonna be just at night.
No.
It's like all day.
Yeah, it's gonna be like an all-day thing.
Party, party.
The rest of the bands, I don't want to spoil things because I just want to make sure it's all solid before I start shooting it out there, but it's gonna be a mix of jazz. There's gonna be punk, hardcore, there's gonna be rock, we're gonna have like a sea of different kinds of genres, I kind of want to have a lot of our friends that we've had come through. I think maybe VTB, VTB might be coming.
That'd be cool.
Yeah.
And you guys can check out Mystery Shop page, but also Alex's page to see the performances that he goes.
Yeah, my page is like a media.
Yeah, he's, he, his whole media shit, my page has some of it, but if you want to see like all of it, everything, then go check out Alex's page for all of his media, the bands, everything.
I think I'm the only one on Instagram with that, so look that up, A L E C K S, you can find a bunch of videos of all the kind of shows that we've had.
Yeah.
Um, we just had a touring band called The Chunks, they ripped it.
Such a name.
Yeah, and then they also had a Santa Barbara band that played with them called Dropsy, Dropsy's named after a goldfish disease.
Not surprised.
Have you heard about this disease?
Not surprised.
I have not.
Liz has heard about the disease.
Liz knows everything.
She's the smartest person in the room, always.
Walkin' X up E D A.
And uh, yeah, Liz, Liz is a legend. Legend, legends never die though.
Look at him, legend.
What's the, what's the Sandlot quote, heroes live forever, legends never die?
Oh, damn, yeah, I guess so.
Bringing it up now.
Forever.
Yeah.
Ever.
You do that too well.
For, I used to do it a lot when I was a kid.
Let's be the Sandlot kids for Halloween, what would you be though?
I don't, I, I got nothing.
We can't, I don't want to do Goonies.
I don't know.
We can be the Sandlot kids.
I guess so.
When the guy's asking him about, you want some some more, he's like, how am I gonna have some more if I haven't had none?
Is that comedic genius to you?
Some more, some more, you want some more?
Oh, next Friday, we have a show at the mystery shop.
Yes, we do.
Center Point, uh.
That's gonna be so good.
Where's my, I think my phone's over there.
Do you need the list?
Bobby, Bobby, could you pass me my phone?
Do you need the list, I have it, I think. I'm excited for Center Point, they kill it every time they're here and they're all so nice, they're all like so nice.
Oh, it's a band, I thought you were talking about Center Point.
That's what they're named after.
So yeah, they're named, they're like local, super cool people.
They're about it, they are about uh, the locals, you know, they're Oxnard-based, Nardcore as they say.
Nardcore.
That's what it's all about, is local all the time, all the artists, all the music.
Totally.
I'm getting the flyer up right now.
Who's this guy?
Alright.
He came to get the Ice Cube hoodie.
Okay, here we go.
What gift did you come for, the Ice Cube hoodie or the uh, Cosby sweater? You get a free gift.
That's a sick Wayne's World hat.
Yeah.
It's a sick Wayne's World hat.
Yeah, what do you want, you get a prize for showing up now.
Or you get a date with Junior.
Yeah, Tide Pod, yeah, get him, get him a Tide Pod shirt, yeah, yeah, Junior's got you.
Nice choice, nice choice.
Alright, hop on, take Junior's spot, until he comes back, come on, yeah, yeah. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
I like your shorts.
It's good to meet you.
These shorts are made from one of my paintings, part of my merch, you know, hey, what's up?
He's plugging, he's already plugging.
Oh, nice, lovely, all my, I'm Adam.
Hi.
Hello.
Yeah, don't, you can't pretend like everybody.
I think we should have done mystery shop t-shirts, mystery shop.
Yeah, hey, Fusion?
Why don't we make ten, mystery shop, District One, Ventura, moving to Oxnard and then I can wear one for you.
There you go, there you go.
Located, do you have a studio or? I don't know, I don't have a studio.
I don't know. I don't have a studio. I... Medium.
Tiny, extra small. Just give him whatever size you have, Junior. He'll probably crop top it. Give it to him.
I'm gonna tie dye that.
Gucci man.
Hell, yeah. I can't wear white. I'm way too dirty. It's gonna get, it's gonna paint blood and hot sauce all over it.
Wait, what? Why that combination?
Cause I...
At one time?
Well, he likes to eat. In one day, probably, yeah.
He likes to eat spicy food when he's paintballing, obviously.
Yeah, painting.
What?
And I'll go skate and get blood on me and then I'll go home and eat hot sauce.
Yeah, when I paintball.
That's a day for me.
I've never been paintballing, so I'm sorry that I don't know.
It's true.
Oh, I have the OnlyFans hot sauce I still need to bring. We gotta try that. We had to...
OnlyFans branded hot sauce?
There is an OnlyFans branded hot sauce. I own it. I have not opened it because I told Fusion we could do a bit with the mystery shop here and we can all try it.
At all, we think that hot sauce does not belong in any of the places you want to look at. I don't own the fans.
I don't know. They brand everything now.
There's a fetish for everything, though.
There is a fetish for everything.
Someone's pouring hot sauce in the junk. Is it Germans, maybe?
Oh, no.
He's not trying to show off his Mariah Carey shirt.
Right there. What? Go outside for a minute. Take a break. Yeah, go smoke some weed outside. It's fine, Junior.
It's a whole different experience with the headphones on.
It is. It's good, right?
I hear the sound effects. I hear your voice is better than I normally hear.
Do I sound better?
I'm a fan of it.
Do I sound okay?
Your voice sounds like you're, it sounds like you're, you're inside my ear, talking to my brain.
Is that fine?
I don't know.
Like you should pay for that.
They're inside your head?
They are inside my head. Yes. There is a voice inside my head and it sounds like you.
I like that.
Do you like that? That's great for you.
Can you imagine if I was someone's like subconscious? That'd be so good. I would love to be someone's subconscious. That's not fun enough. I want to be someone else's subconscious.
Do that. Don't do that. Don't you feel bad? Guilt. Guilt.
No guilt. Fucking do it.
We should have started the show at five.
We're gonna end it.
Oh, is it near the end?
Yeah.
Oh, real quick.
Say, say, say goodbye to everybody in Ventura, you know, uh, mystery shop people.
Yeah, Fusion, act like you cared about it.
Yeah, act like you cared about the...
Big shout out to Rory's, Rory's Ice Cream. Never let us down. Olive Oil people, cool people. Capriccio?
How dare you think Capriccio?
I like Capri, it wasn't Capriccio that caused this. It was a...
Let's say, tell people to fuck off too.
Oh, um...
That one guy, we don't know who he is.
Mechanics Bank.
Yeah, fuck.
What?
Fuck off to the guy I had to kick out of that one show that one time. Drugs are bad.
The number one is the Evike Kids.
I just picked Mechanics Bank because they're probably not gonna hear me.
The Evike Kids ruined it for everyone.
They really did.
Hey, we just met the, uh, KCal. KCal was out on the street, so we saw the guy out there with his camera. We actually walked by him when he was editing his piece that he just sent in covering those degenerates that, uh, did what they did to that homeless woman.
The DJs.
I'm telling you right now, uh, that's, there are a few things that get me as mad as that. Like, that is something that gets me set the hell off. Don't mess with the, don't mess with the homeless. Don't mess with the animals.
Don't look at Alex mad.
You can look at me mad all the time. People do that all the time. No, it's when they start, when there's just some fuck shit going on.
When you're mad, leave you alone.
Oh, yeah, when I'm in that world.
If Alex is mad, that's crazy. That's crazy.
There's a higher power, like, I, I've got an altercation with a guy because he was beating up a cat recently on Main Street. That was a whole thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was a very, it, situation and, uh, uh, I just, when I see this shit going down, that pisses me off. I, nothing can stop me, so I left to work. I do. I work at Coalition. Shout out Coalition Thrift Store. That is my employer. They also are the battered woman, they, uh, they raise money for battered women and, uh, people who are victims of abuse. They are a great organization. They have great stuff, great deals. I'm there Monday through Friday, ten to six thirty. Come by, say hi. I might sell you a table.
Ladies, ladies.
I can sell you a table too, ladies.
My comic brain just heard him say that and I just thought of a tagline. I like my women like I like my fish battered.
We also want to make sure that we give a special shout out to Ventura Arts and Culture Commissioner, Cory Morehouse, and Princess Pills for all the love that they give mystery shop in Ventura.
We love, we love Princess Pills.
Oh, yeah.
We love Princess Pills.
Oh, totally, yes.
Down here on Main Street, the cornhole people. Well, you know, they should come back here to Main Street with or without you, although it won't be the same without you.
For sure, yeah.
But, you know, we really love them too, so.
It was great having them for that one time.
Yeah, they're, they're quite amazing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Junior, don't invite people to our home. No, don't, don't put ideas out there yet.
Oh, and, uh, a special shout out to the funniest Instagram ever, Ventura Backward. Big fan of that. Big fan.
Give us more, please. There's only a few on there.
Big a fan, big fan, big fan of Small Time Citrus. Big fan. I love the content, people. That kind of content I like. There's other content, I will not name the content makers, but I am not a fan of their exploitative content that bullies the disenfranchised. Um, next week on Friday, we got Swing Back, Center Point, Last Remorse and Suicide Revolver, Playing With Tourian Bags, Level and Axe Collector, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four, at the Mystery Shop, Oxnard, California, four twenty South A Street.
That was kind of sexy.
Oh, yeah. That's my, that's my, uh, radio voice. It's just, go somewhere else. Oh, 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 yeah. Don't go fucking with the homeless. Don't take videos of the homeless and say that you're helping the homeless because you're not helping the homeless by making content. I'm sorry. It doesn't work like that.
Oh, God.
Fusion, say goodbye to it.
Goodbye, Ventura. It's been fun. Um, the last like two and a half years have been really fun and memorable down here, for sure, with all the different events, the artists that come by, um, everything. Yeah.